So we have Clovercod up today, so I'll let you give us the update.
Sure. Chief of Human Resources Clovercod for the record. We are fortunate to have 16 talented carpenters in Seattle Public Schools. And also one very talented chief negotiator for us, our Director of Labor Relations, Tom Poless. So, thank you, Tom. What you have before you is a three-year collective bargaining agreement that started on September 1, 2019, and ends on August 31, 2022. This CBA provides for across-the-board wage increases, an increase in the swing-shift differential, increase in the summer work incentive bonus, new hourly premium for temporary employees who are ineligible for SEB, which is the state mandated healthcare, language changes to comply with Janus, which is the Supreme Court case that basically says you cannot compel employees to be part of a union, Washington State requirements around sick leave utilization, transition to SEB, improvements in the swing-shift volunteer request process, new bumpers around bereavement leave, ability to create an apprenticeship program, and transitioning employees to paperless pay information. So the wage increases for the 2019-20 school year are 5.4% across the board. In the 2021 school year, beginning on September 1, general wage increase of 2.1% or the state authorized and funded inflationary increase, whichever is higher. And in the 21-22 school year, general wage increase of 2% or the state authorized and funded inflationary increase, whichever is higher. You will note the fiscal impact for the three years of this agreement is $391,242. We did break that down between capital-funded versus the general fund. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any directors with comments, questions, or concerns? Director Rivera Smith and Director Rankin? Oh, okay. Your hand. Yeah.
I'm trying to understand something. So under the fiscal impact revenue source, the Finance Office estimates that the total new cost of this agreement in 2019-20 is approximately $95,253, of which approximately $68,680 is funded by a combination of the state inflationary increase. How is something funded by a state inflationary increase? Is that really a fund?
Chief Financial Officer Joel Lindbergie is coming up to the podium.
Okay.
Good evening again, Joel Lindbergie, Chief Financial Officer. The state funds an inflationary increase based on the implicit price deflator, and that is mandated in law. So there is an automatic inflationary increase or a raise that does occur.
That is a source of money.
It's a source of funding from the state legislature.
Okay, that was...
Any more director comments, questions, or concerns about this item? All right, seeing none, Ms. Scheck, roll call, please.
Director Hershey?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Rankin?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Hampson?
Aye.
Director Rivera Smith?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, we got to our action items so quick tonight. No, no, no. Holy cow, it's only 6:36 PM. All right now, I should have not said that, okay. All right, we will now move to the introduction portion of the agenda. So we will start with intro item number one, which is approval of a joint operating agreement, JOA, between Seattle Public Schools, SPS, and Technology Access Foundation, TAF, partial waiver of Board Policy Number 2190 with respect to Washington Middle School, and amendment to the Student Assignment Transition Plan for 2020-2021. The exec moved this forward on December 18 for approval. So I'll let...
For consideration.
Oh, I have approval on my thing here, which is what I thought too, but I'm just reading my script. So I'll invite Sheri to take us away.
Thank you, Director DeWolff. Sheri Cox, Senior Advisor to Superintendent, and Happy New Year to the directors. First, I want to start by thanking the Mayor's Office, who is here today, and Seattle Colleges, as well as SHA and the Urban League, and all of the folks who came out and spoke tonight on behalf. I know this is a super passionate topic. As a parent of a Seattle Public School student, I understand our fierceness that comes out as a parent. So I appreciate everybody coming out to talk tonight. I'd also especially like to thank our TAF partners, who continuously keep showing up and are... I'm so thankful for their support to our Seattle Public School students and to Seattle Excellence. And Trish is here tonight, should some questions come up. I'm going to walk us through a very similar format as we used during the COW or the Committee of the Whole. And here's the agenda that I want to use with us. I first want to just start with our mission and vision. I know that what every parent and constituent of Seattle Public Schools wants is for their son or daughters and our students in Seattle to have a high-quality, world-class education that is challenging and that they leave our system, college, career, and community ready. Excuse me. I full-heartedly believe that TAF at Washington Middle School can help us make this happen. Our theory of action, I ask you to recall our bold theory of action. Each of you up on that dais participated in creating this theory of action at some level, and we are all being held accountable to this theory of action and the strategic plan. This is our work, and it's what our team is committed to, to bringing this theory of action to life. So to start, just a quick overview of TAF. We know and TAF knows that there are no silver bullets in education. The work is hard. It involves undoing hundreds of years of systemic racism. And that this is a system that is getting the exact outcomes it was intended to do. We need to change that. Our students cannot wait. So what is TAF? TAF is a partnership. This is about TAF working with the staff at Seattle Public Schools, specifically at Washington Middle School, to become a stronger system. I'm not going to read the slides to you. Many questions have come in as to why... Why Washington Middle School? Why did we pick Washington Middle School? And I first just want to say that this conversation started back... If I go back to the bar here, I think we started the conversation back in March of 2019 in Executive Committee. So if we take a look at the student data and the staff climate data, I think you can see some noticeable differences in the TAF student response data and the Washington Middle School student response data. If we take a look at academic data, TAF is the first one to admit, and Trish can come up and tell if you had questions regarding the data, they are making great progress in their academic data, but they're not done. It's a journey. It's a marathon. It's not a sprint. When we take a look at the Washington Middle School data, this is just some enrollment data. There's been questions about the projections for the upcoming school year. They're very similar. They're still projecting around 600 students. About half of those students will be in the HC cohort, and approximately half of them will not be in the HC cohort. You will hear, or you have heard, that this is the most diverse HC cohort in the city. That is, in fact, not true. Both Jane Adams Middle School and Madison Middle School have similar diverse cohorts, and I've provided you with that data. As far as academic performance data, let me be clear. When you take a look at Washington Middle School data as a whole, they're performing well. But when you really dig into the data, this top chart talks about... It's from the OSPI, Washington School Improvement Framework. It looks at three years' worth of data across the state, and then it ranks schools based on their ELA and math scores. Again, through the lens of all students, out of 10, Washington Middle School is a 7.65. But when you dig in and look at how they are serving African-Americans and low-income students, they are the second-worst middle school in our district when it comes to serving those two populations. Denny, Mercer, and Aki far outperform Washington Middle School in serving African-Americans and low-income students, according to this index. They are on a positive trajectory. And when you take a look at the bottom set of data, you can see the stark difference in academic performance of our HC students versus our non-HC students at Washington Middle School. The other thing that you will see, if you follow a sixth-grade cohort into seventh and eighth grade, in both groups, the academic performance on the ESPA declines. There's one other piece of data that I think is important for us to consider today. When you take a look at average math and ELA scores for our HC students who are being served in the cohort versus not in the cohort across the system, there is less than a 3 percentile point difference in performance on average. Let me restate that. Students in our HC cohort versus in our non-HC cohort, who are all qualified to receive highly-capable services, there's very little difference in their academic performance.
Question? If I might?
Is that how you want to do it?
Are you ready to go for questions now?
I wanted to elucidate what the statement that was just made. Which HCC students are we talking about? District-wide? K through 12?
I'm sorry. Yeah, it's ESPA, and so it's grades 3 through 8, because that's our only self-contained cohort is in grades 1 through 8, but it's the ESPA test, so it's grades 3 through 8. Good question. Thank you, Director Harris. I want us to then think about that less-than-3 percentile points difference and be thinking about, does this justify the segregated system that we have? We've heard tonight testimony about the psychological damage, and I just want us to keep that in mind. I'm going to jump now to engagement. Miss, spend a little bit of time here, because there were many public testimony comments tonight about engagement. And I just want to be super clear, especially as we're talking about the educators at Washington Middle School. So we've heard over and over again that we didn't do the best at engagement that we should have. We did the best that we could at the time, but it was not good enough. And I think the place where we fell down the hardest was in working with our educators at Washington Middle School. We have been out to Washington Middle School on three different occasions. And on our last occasion, which was at the end of November, we, I think, had a robust and more positive conversation with that team. We heard from some of the teachers who had visited TAF Academy, and they shared some of the powerful observations that happened during that visit. But still, we know there's work to do, and you heard about it tonight. And I just want to clear something up. So we've been in consultation with SEA leadership throughout this process, at different junctures throughout. SEA leaders, so leaders from the Teacher and Paraprofessional Union, have been out to Washington Middle School since we visited at the end of November. They conducted one-on-one conversations, and they think they probably spoke to about 80% of the Washington Middle School staff in one-on-one conversations. They report back to us, they meaning the SEA leaders, that the majority of their staff support TAF. However, they're still frustrated with the district, and I'll be that district today, and have questions about how TAF will be implemented, which is great. That's exactly where they should be, because they are going to be engaged in the process of implementation with TAF, should this move forward. SEA leaders have told us that they will support their members. SPS, the district, we're committed to supporting Washington Middle School teachers. We've invested a lot of time and energy. TAF has been with us through this process. We want nothing more than for TAF to launch and be successful. So we're committed to support this work. I also want to call out one other thing. I think one of the directors wants us to ensure is that TAF, I believe, and Trish could speak more to this, but TAF is really about serving students of color for this from educational justice. And we're committed to growing that student population at Washington Middle School in any way that we can. And that's why we, after meeting with some community members, took their advice and invited the Leshai and the Madrona families to our last rounds of engagement. And we want to continue to have those conversations with the families, because it would be a choice school for them. And so the families who would be interested in that, we brought out paperwork on how to go through the process of open enrollment. So we are committed to continue to try to grow the families that, one, should be going to Washington Middle School and are not for a variety of reasons, and, two, invite families of color for this from educational justice to, through the open choice process, to come to Washington, should there continue to be seats available, which there are at this point. The next thing is the financial implications. There is a cost to this, and we heard a few of our commenters tonight speak about this. These dollars would come from mitigation fund, which is a fund that some of you from previous boards have had us hold dollars for intentionally for different reasons. But we do plan to have a mitigation fund again, and so this cost would come from that. The result is a three-year total of a little over $1 million, and this is in addition to the staffing allocations that we give out through the weighted staffing standards. I want to just call out that, yeah, this comes with a cost. But in a second, I'm going to show you what TAF brings to the table in this partnership to help with this. This assumptions, because we had to make some assumptions here, is the first thing is that this cost does include a smaller class size of 1 to 25. And we've talked with TAF, and if we needed to do the 1 to 28 or 1 to 30, we could make that work. But right now, this cost does include the 1 to 25. This cost includes sending staff to the STEMBY TAF Summer Institute and providing an additional 24 hours of professional development for each teacher who attends. At the current time, the above estimates do not include any costs associated with the ratio or changing the 1 to 80. And we don't believe at this time that there would be any additional cost to that. So in thinking about that, what does... So TAF comes with resources as well. And their resources come, one, in their valuable partnership and some of the trainings that they will be providing to our teachers. They will come with the Director, College and Career Readiness Program, STEMBY TAF Coach, Student Support Specialists and Program Coordinators, Student Support and Enrichment. And you can see the cost there is approximately $600,000 per year for the first five years. Director DeWolff, do you want me to keep going into this section?
Yes, please.
Okay. I want to talk, and I really appreciate director's comments tonight about... We're not dismantling, we're not removing services from highly-capable at Washington Middle School. We are looking at the possibility of a blended model. We're required by law, TAF in federal ways, required by law to provide highly-capable services, special education services to students who qualify for those services. I want to acknowledge that our advanced learning team and our special education teams have been a partner in this process. They've been to some of the community engagement sessions with us. I believe Dr. Pedrosa is in the back here tonight with us. They are going to continue and are excited about partnering in this work to learn how does TAF serve students who qualify for both special education services and highly-capable services in a blended general education model. That is something that they want to really understand and learn from. Again, we're not ending HC or special education services at Washington or anywhere in the district. We're asking tonight to waive the cohort model at Washington. We're going to continue to support students who require 2E, access, resource room, services, whatever services they may need in the least restrictive environment. For IEP students, we'll continue to follow and monitor their IEPs and adjust the current social-emotional supports that they may need so that they can remain, not just remain in the general education, but thrive in the general education classroom. I also want to point out that the law does not require that we serve students qualified for HC services in a cohort model. Currently, we don't serve HC students in a cohort model in our high schools. The law does, however, call on us, our strat plan calls on us, and I dare say it's a moral imperative that we provide services to students through our MTSS model. And every year, we have to report how we're providing services to our HC students, to OSPI. So we're going to continue to do that. We do it now. We have HC students across our system, and I bet every 104 of our schools, and every year, we report to OSPI how we're serving students. I want to call out this list here that you see. This list is from OSPI, and they talk about how we can go about serving or how TAF goes about serving in partnership with us our students who qualify for HC services in a general education classroom. I also want to point out that these are just good instructional practices. It's how we serve students who may be qualified for ELL. It's how we serve students who may need special education services. These, in other words, these are just broad categories of best instructional practices. I'm not going to go through the whole list with you tonight, but I am going to go through the first three of them. And if you need more information, again, I'm open to sending you more information. This comes, again, from an OSPI presentation. The first one here is what's called curriculum compacting. And TAF will utilize the pre-assessment work. They get to know their students, stories, strengths, and needs so that the teachers can plan and design meaningful, rigorous lessons for students, including students who require highly-capable services. The next one is differentiated, and I think this is a pretty common phrase, but when you dig into what it actually means, the most instruction for highly-capable students based on their general education characteristics needs to be more advanced sometimes. And what does that mean, though? What does advanced mean? How is it more rigorous? And this is a model by Kaplan that identifies four ways that teachers can advance or differentiate instruction for highly-capable learners, special education learners, English language learners. These four things, they can design... The teachers can design learning activities that are novel, accelerated, and go more in-depth and have more complexity. And this is the project-based model that TAF uses. They go deep into the concepts, the concepts that kids oftentimes choose on their own, so that they are interested, they are engaged in this. This next one here is about enrichment. And enrichment is a broad name for instruction that's not normally covered in the student's required curriculum. Enrichment may take place both in class, after class, on weekends, after school, in special programs, in a variety of settings, basically. This model is what TAF is, I think, mostly about. And it's probably one of the most known, researched, and the broadest implication and application for schools serving highly-capable students. One question that has come up a number of times, it didn't come up tonight, interestingly, is around the math. Math has been the big concern. And I said it at the Committee of the Whole, and I want to state it again tonight, that math classes, after consulting with TAF staff, we realized that it is a stretch to take a student who is performing at a sixth-grade math level, and then some at seventh grade, some at eighth grade, some at Algebra I. That's probably, while our teachers are fantastic, that might be a stretch as far as making sure that the students master the content of each of those levels. And so we've committed, in partnership with TAF, that each math group would have two different, no more than two different groups. So it might have some students who require sixth-grade math, and it might have some students that require eighth-grade math in it. Or maybe it would have sixth-grade math and geometry students in it. However that gets structured is a decision that the school, in partnership with TAF, would make. So tonight, what we're asking is for three things in this for consideration. Approving the Joint Operating Agreement, a waiver with respect to Policy 2190 and only to Washington Middle School, that the highly-capable services and learning programs, basically removing the self-contained cohort, and then amendment to the Student Assignment Transition Plan, that includes that language. And with that, these are future Washington Middle School students at Bailey Gatzard in this picture.
Thank you, Sheri. Really appreciate that. I'm going to ask directors to, if they have any questions or comments, concerns, to elevate those now, but really keep those focused on the underlying bar, which is the current intro. We will, and after we're done having a conversation about that, then we'll move to the amendment. So if there's anything particularly focused on this underlying bar, this would be the time to ask those questions. I see Director Mack first.
Thank you for the comprehensive presentation, as well as answering to us directly a lot of the questions that were asked during the Committee of the Whole. So a lot of the questions that I had previously asked have been answered, and I don't have quite as many at this point. But one that actually... I sent some of my questions in advance around capital and ownership, and I'll get into those questions in a second to try to get clarification on that. But I wanted to ask really quick, you had mentioned that outreach was done to Leshai... But I wanted to ask really quick, you had mentioned that outreach was done to Leshai and Madrona Schools to encourage them to option into Washington, potentially? And I'm wondering whether or not they were provided or told they would be provided transportation? Because under our current option system, if you opt into a not your attendance area, you actually don't get transportation.
That is correct. We did not promise transportation.
It seems to me like it would be a nice thing to do for those students because if we're trying to benefit them, they are students further away from educational justice. We're wanting to bring them into TAF. The fact that they don't get transportation is going to be a barrier.
I agree, and I guess we didn't go out because that would require Board approval for you to approve that.
Maybe a Director could make amendment.
A Director could always make an amendment, Director Mack.
Okay, great. Well, so I just clarifying that, that, you know, from a perspective, I think that being able to serve our students furthest away from educational justice in the TAF model, being able to allow those students in through the choice process that are not directly in the attendance area, I think is important that we remove the barriers that exist. So I'm supportive of-
I think another concern that was brought up by a parent was actually, I mean, we have to be careful. We can't decimate Meanie Middle School in the hopes to grow Washington Middle School. And as you know, that's always a consideration and a balancing act for our enrollment team.
Which we'll talk more about, I think, under the amendment concept. But my questions around the dollars and Board approval and the investments that are going to be made in Washington Middle School. The first of all is the one-to-one laptops that are being provided by the district. Are those already included in the bar that's going to be introduced tonight?
They're included in the bar before you, yes.
The one, this one, or the one that is talking about technology that we're approving?
This one right here. So-
The dollars for that are included in here? Okay, great.
I think it says fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
I think at the bar, you're going to-
It wasn't in the technology one that we are approving.
I think the one you're considering tonight is a one-to-two model, and this would increase a one-to-one at Washington.
Okay. So it's additional to that one? Okay.
Yes.
And then there was reference in the Joint Operating Agreement about smart panel document cameras, tables, and individual chairs, and specialized labs, that those would be provided by the district. And I'm curious to know, first on, where is the expenditure for that included in our process? So we have capacity management bars coming for us to improve any kind of capacity management changes that need to be made. Is that where those are?
Yes.
So those, have they been built in already? Because I don't remember discussing those in ops.
According to my friends down in that department, yes, they have been built into that bar. Not because Washington Middle School is special, but as just part of what's in that bar already would include this type of technology and whatnot.
Okay, so we'll be talking about that bar in introduction tonight, too. So, okay, so there's the tie-in.
But I just want to make sure, though, that I'm clear that they did not specifically add anything for TAF at Washington Middle School. It's just part of the-
Overall capacity management across the district.
It would be part of the overall capacity management, and it would look similar at Washington Middle School as it would at Jane Adams Middle School, for example.
Okay. Okay, so then my other question is around the Joint Operating Agreement language and the response about the SBI building and building out the infrastructure there and who leases the building. I'm not questioning whether or not this is something we should do. My questions are around, how is that going to be managed from a district organizational partnership standpoint? The answer that I was, we were given about the SBI building is that, at this point, it still isn't owned by the Urban League, but that it will be and that there will be two floors that TAF will lease. That's, TAF would be leasing those. And in the JOA, it says that any infrastructure investments become the district's, the ownership of the district. So I'm wanting to understand how we're going to manage those things if, for example, we build out two floors of a building that we don't, that we're not leasing. And are we going to have a partnership agreement, or how are we going to?
We would not be building out those two. My understanding, and Trish, if you have more information, is that that would be taken care of by TAF or the Urban League, and that would not be our capital projects.
It says in the JOA, and maybe this is a question for Mr. Narver, but it says specifically in the JOA that infrastructure capital will be property of the district. So I'm a little concerned about the language there.
That's within the school building, and if that's not clear, we can certainly-
So while you're looking for that, Director Rankin, do you have something specific to that comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify about the SBI building. That what came up at Committee of the Whole was that that also is not contingent upon, that's not contingent upon this agreement. This agreement is separate from-
Right.
-that building, and if that building, if the use of that building doesn't come to fruition, TAF at Washington Middle School can still be as intended.
Yes.
That that's kind of a bonus possibility?
Right. That's my understanding as well. I just want to understand how the legal arrangement would be set up and who owns what. And to the extent that the JOA states that, or I'm sorry, it was in the answer to us that this would actually be a building where students would be during the school day? I'm wondering if, I would assume that we would have a partnership sort of, like, agreement in terms of utilizing that site if we are not leasing it, correct?
Yes, we have these types of situations happening across the district. And the one that is, comes to mind most quickly for me is that we utilize Seattle Fire Department's Firehouse near Garfield, and we have a skill center course that's taught in that space. And so this would be a similar, I don't know the specifics of the names of the agreements, but we'll make sure we do all of the right policies and procedures to, but we have this happening throughout the district. The other thing, our Bridges students, for example, go off to work-study programs. And so we have these types of arrangements in other places through the district, so we would follow those same policies and procedures.
Okay, I just wanted to publicly daylight that and also just make sure that we had that on our radar for the future, knowing that it's not happening today, but that's something that we need to make sure we consider. My last question is around, in the JOA, the eleven point two point six. This was a confusing section for me to read because the way that this is organized is that we are putting dollars in directly. We're committing to those, and then everything else is in-kind. Except for, in that section, it says specifically, because Washington Middle School will be receiving funds from two entities. And that, to me, is a mingling of funds, and I'm very confused because Washington Middle School doesn't, our schools don't receive funds, the district receives funds, and we distribute. So I'm very confused about how this works and what that, and I'm wondering if maybe that language needs to be cleaned up a little bit because it's confusing.
I can tell you what it means, and then we can, I can work with our friends at TAF and Chief Narver over there. What it means is that if TAF buys, all of the staff that I'd mentioned up there, computers, those are TAF staff's computers. They go with TAF staff. If TAF mounts, following our EdSpecs and all specifications, a gigantic whiteboard, smart screen of some sort, that becomes ours when they, if they were to leave. They would follow all of the same processes and procedures. We have this happening in our schools. I know some of you, this is near and dear to your hearts. But PTA is a great example of, they're going to, we don't support MACs as a district. We don't support them. But that doesn't stop PTAs from coming in and giving schools fifty Macintosh, maybe ten, ten MACs for staff to use. So those are in-kind donations, and we don't require the Board, any sort of Board approval on that. But we don't support some of the stuff either that those folks, so we've got technology out in our schools that is not being supported by SPS because of the donations.
Thank you. Director Rankin?
Just less clarification on that, is that, so we're just, this section is only referring to materials and supplies. The eleven point two point six. And that the district's going to come up with a process and procedure for making sure that it's clear who owns what. I just, I, and maybe that's a further question to go back to Mr. Narver in the future if we can't-
We've marked it, and I will work, because this is a joint operating agreement, I'll have to work with the TAF team as well.
Thank you, Director Mack. Director Rankin, and then Director Harris.
Thank you. I have questions about, that sort of relates to the amendment, but also just generally enrollment projections for each and people optioning in and how we're, if we have different scenarios or how we're planning for where students are going to be going. One of my concerns, so I like the idea of offering transportation to encourage people to go there, but at the same time, if their assignment school is Meanie and Meanie is under-enrolled, then we're actually going to tell those same families that they don't get to choose it. So that, and that I know is really frustrating and disappointing for people to be, you know, told everywhere, everybody can option wherever, and then, you know, we limit or cap enrollment in certain places to balance enrollment in other places. And then, so I don't, I just don't want to end up, like, really disappointing and misleading families by saying, oh, it's going to be so great, and you can option in, and then, oh, actually, your school's going to be too small, so you don't get to. How, like-
I think you were at the meeting when we had that conversation with some of the Leshai families at John Muir. Because they were the ones who first brought that up about, well, but what if Meanie? And we did say it, and we would say it again, that it is, we can't empty-
Well, I guess, so I was at that meeting, but the response and in the FAQ to some of our other questions that we have to the response that will follow the option school procedures is-
It's, I think it's the choice process, not option schools, but go ahead.
Whatever, yeah, the choice process still seems like punting, I don't know. I just want to, I don't know if we have a way to realistically predict who will go where and in terms of staffing and just to think about it, if we're offering an option that's really not an option.
Yeah, I mean, we have our enrollment projections, so we have our projections for next school year for each, both Meanie, as well as Washington and the other middle schools throughout the district. And so we would utilize that information to make decisions about who we allow to choice in and who does not get to choice in, so.
I mean, I guess if it's possible, I would just ask if there's any way we could say that there are this many slots from this school, or something like that, just, just-
I guess, I mean, that would require you to have an amendment to the Student Assignment Transition Plan.
No, it would be in the waitlist process, like, how many people are going to be, it, yeah.
Thank you. So this conversation has been ongoing for a really long time, and part of the reason why we had Advisory Committee setting up, and we've been having a conversation around, what does space available mean in this district? Because it means two things. It means actual physical space available, and it means how many students we project and assign staffing to. And that would be considered staffing capacity, and those two things are real constraints. And we have a complicated and lo, long process to get to the start of school. So it makes it difficult for the district to accurately assign the number of staff to schools perfectly every time. And one of the challenges is, if we're using projections and guesses that we have before open enrollment and not really using the data of, like, these are the people that have signed up to the schools and said they're coming, then we won't match our staffing appropriately. And in this case, with Washington Middle School and having a new program going in and because, and HCC going away, there's a whole bunch of unknowns of, like, how many people will not choose it this time and how many people will want to. And so I would encourage us to find a way to actually use post-open enrollment numbers to be more accurate at that time as opposed to trying to lock in and assume. But having the assumption of, we are expecting and wanting a hundred and fifty sixth graders, and that's what we're wanting, and therefore, we will move the waitlist so that the Leshai students can move in, I think would make a lot of sense.
Thank you. Director Rankin?
The, I guess I would just ask that as much as possible, because I've seen the waitlist process happen several times and it's frustrating, but I understand the constraints. In this case specifically, we're asking people to apply or letting them know that they, we're trying to pull them in. And so I just want to make sure that we're super transparent about the fact that there are these constraints and that if we can at all possibly kind of set expectations.
Thank you. We will, I will continue to work with the principals. In fact, we're going out to Leshai this week to make sure that we're super clear with the expectations. And the other thing I want to note is that there were not many families from either of those two schools who chose to attend the community engagement sessions, and so I don't know the interest, and we won't know the interest. Those families, some of them are actually slotted to go to Mercer. And as you all know, Mercer is well over capacity. And so those would be students that we would absolutely take off the overcapacity issues at Mercer to bring them to Washington. So thank you for that.
Thanks, Sheri. Director Harris?
Actually, I believe you had-
Oh, Director Rivera Smith and Director Harris.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to clarify, so I was, when I was, obviously, read through the JOA, trying to figure out, where exactly do we see, and I'm trying to find it right now, I couldn't find it located here. I saw something about like a set timetable for evaluating the success of TAF at Washington Middle School. It says something about three or four year, I can't find them off the top of my head here. But if there is a timeline and if there are specific metrics for how it's going to be evaluated for its success, because ten years is a long time to go without having a chance to evaluate, and so, if you could flesh that out and clarify that.
Sure, I just wanted to confer with my partner here. We do, there is an evaluation every year of the TAF program that occurs. It's not between, it's not necessarily with you all, it's with the TAF team and the SPS leadership team to evaluate, you know, set the goals. Trish, you want to come?
Sure.
Thank you.
So each year, we do, and hello, everyone.
Hi.
I'm Trish Malines Dziziko, co-founder, Executive Director of Technology Access Foundation. Every year, we do a, an annual review. And we view everything from student achievement to climate surveys to our own staff's performance. Each of them, in their roles, write an end-of-year report in partnership with whoever their school partner is. So it's jointly written, and then from there, there's also a plan developed for the next year. So who's coming into the school, what do the teachers want to do each year? How do we support the work? What does TAF have to do in terms of any fundraising or any other resource allocation to make sure that the school gets what they need? And then, you know, of course, you already have your own interim assessments. I believe you use the MAP test. We use iReady in Tacoma and Federal Way. So all of those are in play. Everything that you normally do, we would do as well. We use iReady. So does Tacoma. So Federal Way and Tacoma use iReady. So all those things don't go away. They continue. And we work with teachers as they're evaluating the data. And because they have common planning time every day as a house team, they can spend more time diving into those interim assessments and any of the work that they're doing in the classroom to kind of catch things early instead of waiting for that January test or that spring test of the MAP.
So then maybe I'll go back to Sheri here. How does, how, they do that, there's the assessment of their own. How is the district then evaluating the program? And then where does our oversight role come into that?
That's a great question, and we would have, we have not had that level of a conversation yet about- That's a great question. And we would have, we have not had that level of a conversation yet about, I mean, we would use the CSIP process, just, I mean, like we are currently using in all of our other schools and looking to see if that school is meeting its goals and in both climate as well as academic performance. Besides the CSIP and the process that TAF uses, we have not discussed any other processes to evaluate the effectiveness.
Yeah, it was definitely related to that. Yeah, so I just wanted to also mention to the fact that a lot of what TAF is providing, also you cannot measure. It's the presence, the understanding, the expertise, the people and the directive from these fantastic educators and leaders in our community. So I just want to make sure that we are holding that and giving that space. That there are a lot of innate benefits that will come hopefully from this partnership that cannot be quantified. And we also need to think about where we are headed with the communities that we are trying to support. We have not done a great job in the past of quantifying our results with those. And in the instances where we have quantified those results, they haven't been great. So I want to make sure that we are giving that space in the way that we have this conversation.
Thank you Director Hershey. I just want to add one, one other thing to, to what Director Hershey just said is we heard testimony tonight about, well, why don't you just give that one million dollars to Washington Middle School? Why don't you just reduce their class sizes, et cetera, et cetera? The research shows that just reducing class sizes without changing instructional practices does nothing for academic performance. So on top of the things that Director Hershey said that are hard to measure, but you can feel it. If you walk into a TAF school, you can feel it. And so there's that. But there's also the professional development that's grounded in equity, racial equity in particular, that TAF can provide. That, I'll be honest, we at Seattle Public Schools don't have the capacity to provide to Washington Middle School at this time. And so this partnership is an opportunity to lift Washington Middle School, which has been struggling. There's no question about it. And there's a variety of reasons for its struggle. But we have an opportunity here with a partner who's willing to do the hard work with us to change that and to change outcomes for students at Washington Middle School. Directors?
I appreciate, I appreciate that. And I'm going to be going tomorrow, actually, going down to visit the TAF school there. Two more quick questions here. I, and I couldn't find this either, but I heard that there's some sort of orientation that the incoming sixth graders will do before school actually starts.
That is correct.
So how are we doing that? Because we can't, are we illegally allowed to bring, make kids come in early?
We have kids.
Is it required or not required?
It's not required. It's optional for sixth grade, incoming sixth graders, which is the only class, by the way, that we're looking to impact next year. It's not required of students. It's encouraged. It's highly encouraged. It's a great team building opportunity. We have students, Director Verasmith, across the district in our schools throughout the summer. In fact, our custodial crew wishes we wouldn't sometimes. But this would just be another, just like our jumpstart program. I think actually they call this jumpstart, which we may have to give a different name to because that's for our kindergarten students. But that happens across the district.
Okay, so that is, and then I also, maybe I'll have to call Greg for this, because I, I was speaking to him in this past week or so about some concerns in regards to the JOA that I don't know if you guys have already ironed out or not. So maybe he can address that. And there were just, there were some areas of potential exposure that could be tightened up. And I don't know if that's happened or, because the current one we have right now, those haven't been.
I don't know what she's referring to, so.
Yeah.
Do you want to tell us?
Can't state. I'll have him.
Version of the JOA that's before you now incorporates the changes that I was recommending. It was on three matters. The incorporation of the five specific, or the specific, excuse me, specific positions that TAF would be providing. I'm sorry. That TAF would be providing. That's now in the agreement. Same with more information about highly capable services. And then a reference to the HR policy that TAF employees on site at Washington would be bound to. Those are the recommendations I made. They were all agreed to by TAF and they are now all incorporated in the JOA.
Into the current one that was posted today?
Correct.
Well, that's, that's, okay. So you're good. Okay.
They're in the one that was sent to you yesterday.
Yeah, I got, there was a frequent ask questions and some financials.
That was this morning. I sent you updated JOA yesterday that called out the three specific changes that I made to it because of Chief Narver.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Director Harris and then Director Hampson.
Real quickly, one, can we put the concept that this is a charter school to bed and kill it? Because.
Yes, thank you.
You have an elected board of directors that is accountable to the public. And Lord knows if people are upset or angry if we pass this and they will vote us out of office. No such mechanism exists for charter schools.
Thank you, Director Harris. It was on slide five, which I'm happy to go back to. That TAF is not a privatization. It's not charter schools. It's not a one size fits all. It's not a silver bullet. It's not a panacea. It's about a partnership and hard work with the educators at Washington Middle School, the families from Washington Middle School, the staff here in central office, you up there on the dais, all of us, should this move forward, are committed to this.
Another couple of questions and comments if I might.
Yes ma'am.
With respect to Director Hershey's comments of the intangibles, I respectfully suggest to you that the student, staff and family satisfaction surveys will capture that kind of information and those changes. And can we do a better job of soliciting that input? Absolutely. But I do believe it can be measured by those surveys. How we measure other schools by surveys? And, and we all know how much I dislike the snapshot SBAC culturally inappropriate tests. And we got to do them because of the federal money that comes with them. Otherwise, one would hope we would shoot those as well. I'm sorry for the militaristic reference. I could see you coming, President DeWolf. But, but I'm having trouble measuring with instruments that are hugely inappropriate. And, and the feedback evaluation instruments make a whole lot more sense to me just on that note. Then when we talk about really full schools like Mercer, because our workload was so robust this last year, we put off the conversation of moving a feeder school from Mercer to Washington. Now, why don't we change the student assignment plan and give everybody a year's notice that we're going to do it the next round?
Director Harris, that's a great idea and that is between you and your board members.
Well, actually, no, it's not.
And we would engage community.
Respectfully, I emphatically disagree. We talked about this a long time and it didn't happen. And this board has two staff members that we're killing and we have bandwidth issues. So that's a bit of a flippant answer when we've been working really, really, really hard.
I did not mean it to be flippant. All to say, we are, it's on Ashley's agenda. And like you all, she was overtaxed with things to do and boundaries to change quickly in some cases. And I know it's on the agenda as we especially look to building a new Mercer Middle School to really figuring out which feeder schools remain at Mercer and which may move into Washington to make it a bigger, heartier middle school.
And I'll pass now. Thank you.
Director Harris, Director Hampson?
So just to kind of, I want to say thank you to staff for working hard over holidays and whatnot to get responses to some pretty major questions, in-depth questions. Many things have been answered. A few things are still in process. Many of us are going to Federal Way tomorrow. And I'm excited about that visit. I'll also be meeting separately with you, Trish, on, on financials because I'm chair of the Audit Finance Committee and also have deep interest in making sure that this is supported by sustainability and capacity of our partner organization. And so I want to feel reassured that we've asked the hard questions and that we know how to enter into a supportive relationship so that this is sustainable because it will, this is not the only scenario where we rely on outside funds to create a much higher quote unquote cost per student in order to actually close gaps or however we want to, want to talk about that. So it's, it's not as if it's a new idea. But anytime that we do enter into this, I think it's really important. I appreciated the note that we got that this is approximately a 10 to 12% increase in your budget, which gives me some reassurance because that's, you know, those are the kinds of capacity questions that I'm, I'm very interested in. Because overtaxing you with, with an additional program, we don't want that to blow up your organization and, and have negative consequences for your other programs in, in Federal Way. So I appreciate that those conversations are ongoing. I do think that it would be important though, it makes sense to me that this evaluation would be as any other school in terms of the metrics, but that we need to be prepared through the joint operating agreement to ensure that there's an evaluation of the partnership and the effectiveness of that partnership in getting those results or not. So that's something that I would ask for to, to bolster the, the joint operating agreement. And then I think we still have work to do, as everyone has brought up, around pathways that ensure that this program is going to be available to students for this from educational justice, particularly African-American students from other feeder schools. And it's a complex discussion. My concern, as I expressed to Superintendent Juno about it, is that if we aren't really proactive about having that conversation in the process of, of entering into this agreement, is that two years down the line, when there's a lot of different people involved and we have different board members and different staff, we're going to say, oh yeah, we meant to make sure that there was a pathway and here, you know, the neighborhood's gentrified even more. And we're, we're not actually meeting the needs of the students that, that we had. We're not doing what we said we were going to do because we, we didn't deal with that pathway issue. So unfortunately, we don't have the race opportunity that, that we would have had if that, that referendum had passed with our voters. And I'm really sorry about that because it does make our job much more difficult. But I, I don't think that means we give up. We have to, it's really imperative that this program is accessible to students for this from educational injustice. And then I think my last comment would just be that the, the way that I view this program and all the conversations I've had and continue to have with community members, with staff from TAF, with staff from SPS, is this is about learning for our district, really important learning. It's also about reciprocity and some reconciliation and, and reparation and reclamation. And I, to Director Rankin's point about trying not to approach this from a deficit mindset, the notion of reciprocity is that we all have something, something to gain. It's, you know, as, as a native person who spent much of her career working with tribes to help them reclaim seeded lands, one time a, somebody who worked in the same field in an adjacent organization said to me, well, you can't have all the land back. And it was sort of like, there's times when I have felt that way in this conversation about the sort of enormity of the thing being taken away as, you know, like, oh yeah, this tiny percentage of, of us that are left are going to come take, you know, we're literally just talking about some acreage of, of culturally and historically significant lands that we need to survive culturally. And so there's just an imbalance in terms of this. And so I hope that, that as Liza said, that we will work hard to focus on that notion of reciprocity and what this brings, the opportunity that this brings for our entire community by putting our, our focus. And thank you so much to all these folks who've come to talk about the work of TAF. It's a, I know how much you're all given up to be here and to speak on behalf of this organization. And, and I, I think a lot of you know that I appreciate you and you taking your time and I'll leave it at that.
Thanks Director Hampson.
Thank you Director Hampson.
Directors, other directors have any questions or comments? Director Harris?
I was getting on a roll there. I figured I should take a time.
No, please, please. I like, I like seeing in this line of sight, so you're right there. Perfect.
Very odd, but I like it a lot. Instructional aides that are hired by TAF are members of SCA?
They will not be members of SCA. We have read the job description put forth by TAF. I'm looking over at my chief HR. And we do not believe that we currently have a position in our system that will be doing the type of work that the TAF employees will be asked to do.
And have we had transparent, robust and thoughtful?
Yes. I think that's.
Conversation with SCA about that issue?
Yes.
I don't want to work this hard and have it too because of.
Dr. Cod had a conversation with SCA leaders. In that same conversation that I shared the information about the one-on-one conversations that those folks had with the Washington Middle School staff, the direct question was asked about this particular position and the answer was at this time, there are no concerns. Ish. CloverCon?
Sorry, I'll just add. We have full-time positions all over this district that are funded by nonprofits, community-based organizations that are working full-time in our schools. They're not represented by SCA. Seneca, Vietnamese Friendship Association, City Year, Communities and Schools, just like four off the top of my head. This is happening all over the place. So this is not unique to have staff that are funded by another organization working in our schools. These are support staff. These are not the classroom teacher of record. They are support staff. And so this is not a unique situation.
And, and that is going to be crystal clear in whatever JOA we sign. Is that correct?
The JOA, I, I don't think this JOA spells out, I mean, it spells out the job description in the bulleted list that I included that was not on there previously. So I'm not, I guess I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
We are very clear that all the teachers at Washington Middle School, certificated staff, are members of SCA, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Could we also make it clear that our, whatever job description we call it are not represented and make it very clear?
It's not our job description. It's TAF's job description. So they will be hiring all of these folks and they will not be SPS employees. And so there would, should not be, and TAF will also be paying them. So there should not be any confusion that they are SPS employees because they're hired by TAF and they're paid by TAF.
And a paragraph that says exactly that would be most appreciated for clarity purposes. Thank you.
Thanks Director, Director Hampson?
This is probably a, a note for future conversation, Mr. Narver, around, I'm still struggling around the, the response to the questions about this being a grant, that not being a grant because there's no funds exchanging hands. But the way that I read policies six two two zero and six one one four tells me something otherwise. And I know that there's this intersection, this strange intersection of the legal nature of the policy and the fact that there's actually a fiscal implication. And we don't have to solve it now. But I, I need to get more clear. And maybe the problem is that policy is not clear. Is, I think, probably what it comes down to. But I need to understand, how do we get that clear? And how do I work with Audit and Finance to make sure that it is?
We, we will, we'll talk together and get back to you on that. I think there may be some disconnect with some definitions in the policy. And we just want to make, you know, obviously the board needs to be clear on what it is it's approving. Whether that lines up exactly with an accounting standard versus how our policy happens to be written is something we need to get on the same page about. I did want to make, make clear what is being provided by TAF. That's why I wanted more detail in the contract about the positions that are being funded. So the board's clear on what it's approving. Whether or not that's a quote grant, either within the definition of the policy or how an accountant or budget person would view it will, will. an accountant or budget person would view it, we'll we'll need to get that straight, but at least the contract is clear about what positions TAF is providing and the value to the district of those. Whether 6114 is implicated by that, we'll need to get some more clarity on.
Right, yeah, about the, because there is a commitment of, it requires a commitment of time and resources on our behalf and by that definition, I feel like it, so.
It's clearly something the board needs to consider and improve. The information has to be there. Which of our policies exactly are implicated by it and which box ought to be checked may be something we need a little bit more clarity on, but I I mostly want to make clear that the board has in the document in front of it all the information about what it is we're getting from TAF and the value of it. And I think that concern has been addressed by what's in, in terms of what's been added to the contract.
Got it, thank you.
Thanks, Director Hampson. Any final questions, Director Mack?
Yeah, I mean, to that, actually, Mr. Narver, please don't go away. Because to that question, it did remind me, and I appreciate Director Hampson bringing up that and daylighting that question. So now that it is in the JOA and it very clearly says out what the in-kind donation will be and whether or not we need to approve that in future years or not, that's another policy question that we'll have to be wrestling with. However, is there a place in the JOA or what is our recourse if for some reason TAF doesn't provide that? They don't do the, they don't manage to get their funding that year and they can't, they can no longer support that. So what happens if that, because it's a nonprofit organization, organizations, you know, this is based on fundraising, so I'm wondering like what sort of recourse if something were to happen with the nonprofit and they didn't get their funding, what happens?
So, well, one right the board has, I believe it's section 16.2 of the JOA, talks about the right of the district to terminate the contract if, one, TAF isn't able to live up to its obligations, or, two, the board considers in its sole discretion that continuing with the TAF arrangement isn't in the best interest of the district. Notice has to be given to TAF, there has to be public discussion of that, the agreement has to stay in place through the end of the academic year where that decision is made, but the board does have the discretion to, as the tenure agreement rolls out, to consider whether or not the obligations are being complied with and whether or not continuing under this arrangement is in the best interest of the district.
Thank you. Any final questions, comments, or concerns?
I I just have a couple of comments. I think it was in December, the board, or maybe it was September, December, the board participated in a board retreat, and at that that board retreat, Dr. Pedrosa invited us all to participate in a process to really explore white supremacy and work culture, just the the theory and the work in that. And I think the, at least one thing I want to elevate now is particularly white supremacy and work culture can show up in quantity over quality. And I think, just to add to that conversation, particularly around our evaluation, I think it would be really, it'd be smart of us to either work with Dr. Williams or Dr. Scarlett to think about ways that we could be thinking about our quality goals in our planning, because quantity, you know, you need 10 apples, okay, when you get 10 apples, you have to check. But I think there's a different way that we think about our goals for quality, those, are those apples good, right? So we want to, I think that we could work together to really create some better quality goals and metrics as opposed to quantity, because I think that really tends to not be in our favor. The other thing I wanted to make a comment on was during the public comment, a couple of times, people made a point to say that teachers at Washington Middle School, X, Y, Z, and I do disagree with that. I talked to teachers, and it would be easy for me to think, you know, listen to 10 teachers and and assume that they are speaking for them all, but I want to be at least really clear from Director Rivera Smith, since I had this opportunity to speak with teachers, that it wasn't a consensus among the group. It felt pretty even, folks that supported it, folks that were frankly mad at the district and feeling distrust, which I think is certainly something we should continue to engage and heal that trust, and then some folks that weren't really sure about it and didn't like it. So I think that the the monolith that those teachers are being pinned with is not true, that there were a lot of teachers that were supportive. And the last thing about money, I heard somebody, you know, certainly in public comment, too, people brought up the the amount of dollars that we're going to be putting into this. I appreciate your clarification around the mitigation funds, but for me, I believe investing what works to serve our students from furthest from educational justice, that is a number that we should not be worrying about, right? If if that is what this is calling for, then I think we should do what we have to do to rise to that challenge and meet the need to serve those students for this from educational justice. So for me, yes, the dollars are important, we are fiscally responsible for this district, but it it is an investment we should be making, and students from furthest from educational justice. I am really excited about this bar. I'm going to invite, since there's no final questions.
Director Wolf, can I just follow up on one other thing, because I want to make sure that I was super clear, that the SEA leaders had those similar one-on-one conversations with approximately 85% of the staff at Washington Middle School, and they heard in those one-on-ones exactly what you and Director Rivera Smith heard, is that they're not, they're actually pretty much in favor of TAF, but they're very hurt by the process that we went through and and we are committed to continuing to work on that, so thank you for that.
Any final comments, Director Harris?
Yeah, and I want to talk about this slide here, and I believe that CFO Bergy will elucidate that actually this this money doesn't go very far in terms of hiring staff to bring down class sizes in and of itself, so it is not a dollar-for-dollar exchange. This is an investment and it's a leverage, right? Is that correct? I got a thumbs up from CFO Bergy. I want that on the record. That's something new and different. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris, and I I do trust the great work of Trish and TAF, and I do imagine that if there's a challenge about funding, you will rise to that challenge. Thank you. I'm going to invite Director Rivera Smith to read into our next portion to present Amendment One for our consideration.
Amendment One to the Board Action Report, Approval of a Joint Operating Agreement Between Seattle Public Schools and Technology Access Foundation, Partial Waiver of Board Policy Number 2190 With Respect to Washington Middle School, and Amendment to the Student Assignment Transition Plan for 2020-21.
Thank you. Director Mack, did you want to make any comments, questions, or concerns?
Oh, yeah, I I want to kind of present the amendment you all hopefully have had a chance to read it, and thank Director Rivera Smith for joining me in this thought process What I hope is a attempt to have a win-win solution in a challenging situation, where, as Director Hampson just said, we haven't actually laid out, like, how are we going to have this be in the long term sustainable for serving the students and have our assignment match that? I have those concerns as well, and and obviously, the the amendment is to the point of the current concern. Just to set the stage for context, the amendment is only giving the option, it's not requiring anyone, it's only giving the option to a limited number of students that already have that option, they just don't have a guaranteed option. So that is the sixth-grade students that are HC identified in the pathway that is Washington, which covers five different middle school areas, it's the southeast, and we already have this in the student assignment plan where you can apply, just like we were talking about the other elementary schools applying to TAF, they can apply, it all depends on space available. The space that is, that does exist is at Robert Eaglestaff, and it is in the north, which is inherently not equitable, it's far away, however, that is still the HCC cohort site, and there are four others, and there may be space elsewhere as well, but in my understanding, that's where the primary space would exist. This amendment would not change the pathway to Washington, it would leave it. So the students that were expecting to come, they can come or not. We got data earlier today from CONSE that currently in the sixth grades, sixth graders at Washington, 71% of the HC capable, eligible students are are at Washington from the pathway. So not all students actually choose to come into the pathway in the first place, and they, we may have students that choose not to come and go elsewhere. But they, it's not going to change the pathway, it's going to continue having those students be initially assigned there. And in the long run, that will give a, if our highly capable identification doesn't become more proportionate, it will give more access to TAF than other students. So in considering to make this for, in considering this amendment, one of the ideas that came forward was moving the entire cohort to MEANIE, and there seemed to be a lot of support for that. However, at this point.
I disagree.
All right, so the, well, it's community support and non-community support, and at this point, that's not, I'm not, I'm not putting, I just wanted to clarify, I'm not putting forward that amendment because I think it would be way too disruptive, and it, we are not at a place where that would 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 work for a variety of reasons. However, the Advanced Learning Task Force just recently came out with recommendations, one of which was, don't remove the the access that currently exists in the way that it is before we set the plan and and do pilot things. And I think that this solution here actually provides both of those options, because TAF will go into a blended model and it will be provided, and the pathway's not changing. The only thing that this amendment is doing is allowing those students that are in that pathway with the, that that want to choose, they have to take an action to choose it, that they would have a guarantee to another highly capable cohort site. In doing so, we also don't have to waive 2190, so we don't have to actually waive just a portion of our own policy. That's the other piece that that is there. And so that's kind of the the underlying basis of the the why on the amendment, and I am open to questions and conversation.
Thank you, Director Mack. Director Rivera Smith, do you have comments or, yeah, I would love to hear more about your, how you got to this.
Yeah, no, I'm I'm actually really excited about this, the potential this allows our families to have, because as Director Mack was saying, this still leaves them the option to go to TAF and to to experience that and to experience the blended model there, but it still keeps us to our our commitment we made to these families when they began this program, when they started what was then the APP and is now HCC program, to give them that continuum of services in that cohort model. And this isn't even speaking to whether or not that's that's our path going forward as a whole district, because that is still something that we will be discussing and looking at in conjunction with the Advanced Learning Task Force recommendations, which we have not even been presented yet, but are floating out there, which we can see, we can pull nuggets from, they are unofficial as of now, but we can see what their intents were and what they're hoping as far as, don't just, don't eliminate the model now, make sure we have a piloted and trusted program that shows, that shows the potential for serving the students in the neighborhood or blended schools. So, and I know, and I'm speaking to the board here now, that, you know, I want us to really think about this, because I, in regard, it's just even in the same vein as what Director Hampson was saying about the reciprocity, that we don't have to be, we don't have to be removed from the idea that we can work together to find a kind of a common ground where we do want to have this TAF program come in, because it does, I mean, it sounds like an amazing opportunity, and I can't wait to go down and see it tomorrow. I really appreciate all the work that's been done to bring this to our, to our, as a potential program here at our district, and I still, again, though, we have to look at, you know, where we, where we are now with the students and the families who are in the HCC program, who, you know, some of them, a lot of them, you know, aren't even against TAF, it's just, it's a fear of unknown, of not hearing a definite plan of how they will be served, and of, you know, and those are things I understand can't be answered right now, and it's like, because I respect that TAF model is a lot, is about bringing students in and building things together, building plans and curriculums, and and doing that with the students, so I respect that completely. I also just want to feel like we are, we are being true to the program we already have going and to just, you know, our obligations we've presented in our policies and in the state law requirement of a continuum of services there. So I look forward, I know we're not deciding tonight, we have two more weeks before we decide any of this, so definitely interested in having conversations with each of you about this. Looks like Director Hampson's ready for that right now? Oh, sorry, Rankin.
Directors have questions and comments about this amendment? Director Rankin first, Director Hershey?
Well, so my understanding about moving a cohort to MEANIE is that it would increase racial segregation, which I know we have a policy about creating new schools, can't create racial segregation, that wouldn't technically create a new school, but, so. Yeah, no, but I'm just saying that for anybody that might have thought, well, why did they, why did they talk about MEANIE, whatever, yeah. This proposal, proposed amendment, I'm wondering about how it would, how it matches or whatever with the the big, greater timeline for HC services that are yet to be determined, that's the the six-year timeline or whatever it might be, how this, how this fits in with that, the greater, or if it needs to reflect that there will be changes or that, who knows what the cohort model will look like at the end of that process, and then how does this match, match with that? Does that make sense?
Well, I don't, I I know we've talked about a six-year timeline, but I don't think we we haven't seen it.
Or I don't know, just whatever it is.
Well, it's the thing, we don't, we don't have a comprehensive plan going forward as to, this is, you know, and this year, we're going to start doing these things, and so there's still, like, that, all of that.
Well, so I guess my question really is, is this for just the next year's incoming sixth graders?
Yes.
Or does it, is it ongoing?
I don't believe it's ongoing. This this amendment is only for next year.
Thank you, sorry, that was my, that was, yeah.
Yeah, this this amendment is only for next year's sixth graders. Whether or not we would want to continue it in a future year is another question for later, but I I actually do feel like being that targeted is that this is just for, this is just for this transition year and the maintaining the access for the students, especially the mother of color who was talking about wanting the cohort and that what that program is, the programs are different. Value judgment aside, whether or not they're going to provide services, I believe that, yes, they're going to be providing services, it's just different and different what, you know, than what was expected, and so continuing to provide access to that, I think, is fair.
It was mainly the timeline that I was like, is this just forever, or is this, but you're talking about just next year's.
The amendment is just to next year's sixth graders, yeah.
And then the other question I have is, if there's capacity at Robert Eaglestaff now, what does that capacity look like compared to who might option it? Is this even necessary if there's capacity? And then the second part of that is, there's not access without transportation, but are we prepared to provide transportation? I mean, I, yeah.
Standing from, my understanding is that.
Director Mack, just one moment. I just wanted to thank Director Hampson for being here, and happy birthday to your daughter.
Happy birthday.
Thanks, Director Hampson. All right, thanks, Director Mack, for the pause there, go ahead.
Yeah, no problem. So my understanding is that transportation would be provided, that was part of what's in the fiscal impact, because this is continuing the policy 2190 with an option to the self-contained cohort and that transportation goes along with that. So there would be a fiscal impact depending on how many students selected it.
So can I just clarify that HC students get transportation to any school they want over other students?
No, no, they do not, actually.
So how would that be tied into this?
No, so so that's why, that's why, okay, our student assignment plan and this whole thing is actually quite complicated, so, well, you know this already, but, so a lush-eyed student that options into Washington doesn't get transportation because they're outside of that boundary, okay? A highly capable student that options into not their pathway school, in the current setting, also does not get transportation if there's space available. So A, they don't have a guarantee, so let's say somebody in the Washington area wanted to go to Jean Adams, just picking. First, they have to get over the hurdle of, is there space available and is it a weightless move? And second, they would not have transportation. What this amendment is trying to do is saying that since there will be no cohort model in your pathway, you'll have access.
It's guaranteeing a spot and transportation.
And the transportation goes along with it, yes.
For the rest of the three years?
No, just for the sixth, well, it would be for, it would be for those sixth graders, it would continue for that, just like when we grandfather that same band in the future year, so it would be, it would be transportation over a few years, yes. But just to, just to clarify for the numbers we're talking about, actually, I think it's really important to think about, the number of HC, of qualified students in the pathway is only 115. So we are, we're actually only talking about 150 people that would, might even consider it, and the like. And the likelihood of the, them picking it is actually relatively low because there is a lot of support for Washington. So it's an unknown, but I just want to say that I, you know, it's not, we're not talking about moving 600 kids or 600 kids moving.
Do we know what the space available right now already is at Robert Eaglestaff?
Yes, we know that, uh, and because Lipton Springs is moving out.
I know that, um, there is space for this hundred students, should all, 100 or 150. The, uh, project, the five-year projections for the non, uh, the, the attendatory students is projected over the next five years to decline slightly, um, so.
So I just want to clarify that what we're actually talking about is transportation for primarily white students away from a school that a new model is being brought into, just so we're super duper clear. Because there's space available, so they could opt into it now.
The waitlist on highly capable last year did not move at all. No one moved from their pathway, so the, that, that doesn't happen. That hasn't been happening, that's why the guarantee would be helpful.
It hasn't happened because the, there is no space currently at Robert Eaglestaff, so that is why the waitlist and none of our other stu-, schools that have HC, none of our other middle schools that have HC have space available in them at this time. None of them have space right now except for Washington Middle School. And so yes, Director Rankin, what you're saying is that we would be providing, um, transportation as an option when we're, we were just talking a second ago about not providing transportation to our Lashai and Medrona families.
I just, I guess I just want to state my discomfort with the fact that we've conflated unfortunately the conversation about TAF with HCC that because of the location, it's forced, it has forced a thing and then, and then this is saying that if you don't think it's good enough for your kid, you can leave. I'm just sort of uncomfortable with that. I'm just really uncomfortable with what this is setting up.
Thank you, thank you. Director Hershey?
Yes, I have many questions. I guess my first question is in the community engagement, because even looking at this, right, like, looking at this on surface, it seems like a really good idea. We are giving the opportunity for families that are already, that, we promised them something that they can continue to have that thing. But I do have some questions around the community engagement portion, like what was it? Like what, because, because I'm reading it here and to me, off top, it seems much more that we're, we're leaning really heavily on the feedback that we got at the meetings that we had for TAF from a lot of our HC families, one. But then second, also, when I think about the, the call out to the Advanced Learning Task Force, again, thank you for all of their work. There wasn't a whole lot of representation from general education families, too. So, so I'm just really wondering, how did you arrive at this place from the community engagement piece? And then I have more follow-up questions after that.
I, I think listening to the testimony from Yvonne and the other families of color that I've spoken to directly has actually risen above in my mind because I asked the question directly of, if this is happening, what do you want? Those, of those students, of the, the ones that have the intersectionality of being of color and having their children in the program and wanting to still maintain that? And their answer was wanting to still have the option. So that in my mind actually is part of why I feel like this has risen fur- further. I understand there's a lot of differing perspectives from various folks, um, but that, that is part of where I feel like the, that voice is speaking loudly to me.
Thank you for that feedback, Elijah. Thank you, I, I really appreciate that because then to me, it just doesn't seem as though this, especially from the community engagement portion, is meeting the bar that we're setting for ourselves. And I think that with this new board, starting in a place to where if we're setting these expectations for ourselves, for proper community engagement, then we need to meet that bar. And I don't know necessarily if this amendment at this moment does. The next question that I have.
Can I ask you something about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
So this is a decision, this is, this is an option for the HC families from Washington. Who should we have spoken to? Because the ones we spoke to were families from their, from that community.
Did you talk to the families at Robert Eaglestaff?
Okay, so that's, 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 I'm asking you, who else, was just, who is, my question was genuine, who else should we have spoken to?
I would say the families at Robert Eaglestaff, yeah. And I think another piece for me, and just the way that I'm thinking about this, is that we have an opportunity to look at this from the perspective of, you know, when we're, and I appreciate that this is coming from a win-win perspective, but a win-win for who, right? Because looking at the numbers that were sent over to us today, there are still seven African-American students that would potentially have access to this as opposed to much higher numbers and other breakdowns, uh, when we're looking at race. And then, to me, this feels a lot like, okay, well, we're providing this option to the people who have the resources to take it. And mostly, even if we're providing, you know, transportation, which has its own problems in itself, thinking about who's actually going to take that option, I don't know if that necessarily reflects the folks that we're trying to serve in our strategic plan. And again, I appreciate the fact that we're trying to find a win-win here, but I don't, I, I don't really feel in my gut that this is a win-win, which takes us back to the surface of this, right? If we bring all of these things up out of policy and we really ask ourselves, are, is this move, is this amendment perpetuating racial inequity? Or eliminating or mitigating racial inequity? I think it's more the prior because we're again, giving more choice to a lot of students that already have a lot of opportunity. And then it's like, do you want to opt out of equity? Do you want to opt out of this opportunity to do something different that is going to impact, hopefully, our students furthest away from educational justice? And for me, as an educator and as a man of color and as a Southeast resident, I don't necessarily know if this is heading in the direction that we want to head in and sending a message that we want to send. Because again, I believe that this doesn't meet the community engagement standard. It doesn't meet the equity analysis portion for me to like really get behind this. And I don't, I, I don't feel as though at this moment that this is really providing the opportunity and the option that we want for every student. I think it's providing it to the students that have traditionally always had options and opportunities. And I think that this isn't, I, I, I'm just not seeing it. I'm just not seeing it from my perspective.
Thank you Director Hershey, Director Rankin?
My, my sense from emails that I've gotten and from comments is that it's less, well, is that the real issue is the optics and the feeling of the cohort being removed at a school where these students already attend. Less so that, like, because I, I mean, I would be really interested, anybody who's maybe watching online, if you have a student at, um, in the highly capable cohort at Washington Middle School, particularly if your student is a student of color, I would be really interested to know by email if this is something that you would avail yourself of. If you would like the option to go there. My sense, and I'm happy to be corrected, but my sense is that it's the, the really like bad kind of brushed aside feeling of having it taken away from one spot is the bigger issue than here we'll provide this opportunity. Does that make sense? Like, because it still is, it's still far away. Like, the issue isn't so much like, well, I want access to another place. It's that everybody else is keeping the cohort except for us, why? And so this kind of mitigates that, but it doesn't really address like the initial hurt, if that makes sense.
No, I, I.
But I would be really curious to know, like if there are.
I fully and fundamentally agree with that.
Like, who would, who would be able to do it and want to do it? Um, would they want to go all the way up to, I don't know.
And I, I think it would be helpful to help, to hear from those folks. I'm glad you made that shout out. I fundamentally agree with you that this is not, um, this, this does not fix the problem that we are actually removing something. Because the actual, the first part of the inequity is that part that, how do you? And then, and that it is inequitable to make them go across the city. I mean, it's, it'll be a ridiculous commute for folks if that was an option. The only benefit is that if they feel like that is still the right program with the right level of acceleration, et cetera. And I, I hear all of your points. Um, I think the, the intent is to continue to provide, provide access and to not take away the access to a cohort from, uh, that entire region, all this, all the students in that region and all the HC qualified students there.
Thank you Director Mack. Do I have? That's what I heard.
It's just for the sixth graders for next year, yes.
So mindful of the fact that a few minutes ago the lights did go out on us, I want to be thoughtful about time. So if there are any other, uh, comments or questions or concerns about this amendment, elevate those now. Okay, okay, so seeing none, I'm going to move on to item number two. Everybody cool with that? Okay. So item number two for introduction is approval of Department of Education School Climate Transportation Grant. This was brought forward through Audit and Finance Committee on December ninth for approval. I'll invite our staff to come up and speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Wyatt Jesse, Chief of Schools and Continuous Improvement. I am really excited to get in front of you to, this evening, uh, for the Board Action Report, for introduction and hopefully approval for us to accept, um, a grant from the Department of Education. That grant is called the School Climate Transformation Grant in the amount of $3,719,936 over across five years. This particular award by the Department of Ed to Seattle Public Schools was around, really centered exactly aligned to our work that we have been doing around safe and welcoming schools, specifically positive behavioral supports. And so under this grant, it really is just awarding us these dollars to further enhance, um, uh, some of the work that we've been doing at select sites so that we can actually be, um, the term we use is demonstration sites. Which is really exciting because then you have out of our 104 schools, we have our staff that would come and be able to see how positive reports work. How do you really support having, teaching social emotional learning skills? And then there's a lot of other technical things to it, um, but it's again, really exciting, um, around this work, uh, over the next five years. It would start with four schools, one elementary, one K eight, one middle and one high school over the first two years. And then we would move, um, after that to a, uh, four more schools, um, also by those grade level bands. And then it would also be a, we would also be a regional site, so literally the whole Butte Sound probably across the state. That's why, um, we get emails for like Senator Cantwell congratulating us getting this award. Uh, also the University of Washington and OSPI reaching out to us to partner further around this. UW is written at the grant, they co-wrote the grant with us. So I would just like to take this moment to recognize Stephanie King, Aaron Romanek, Pat Sander, uh, some of the folks at the UW Smart Center. As they, uh, we co-wrote this grant.
Thank you. So this came through Audit and Finance and I think this was the first one in December, which might have been Director Harris and Director Matt and Director Rivera Smith were also there, so. Anything else that you feel like came up that we should?
Ever have taken money for these reasons? Thank you.
Yes, Director Rivera.
So when this was moved forward, it was, um, approved with amendments and I don't see on here what, if those were, if those were, they were, the amendments were, um, adding clarification regarding the research opt-in, opt-out process, you were going to check with legal. Uh, I do see a table of costs was added and I think that one, there was a bulleted list, which is supposed to be the deliverables we're asking for. But correct me if I'm wrong here, because I just wanted to see if those.
The outcomes are on, yep, so the outcomes are on page two where it says outcomes for this period. Those are the same KPIs that we, we use under safe and welcoming schools, so that's disciplined attendance and climate survey data. Uh, and then also we would add the adult practices that we're expecting to see around positive behavioral intervention supports. Then like you said, um, Director Rivera Smith, um, on page three, we did add the, um, more detailed budget, um, so that you did, did notice that. And then on page four, if you'll allow me, um, the second paragraph under, um, collaboration, um, this is, uh, this, sorry, uh, this particular items, um. I'll have to get back to you on that one. I know I, let's go through this chapter name. Oh, sorry. Another highlighted item, so that would be back on page three, the second paragraph where it does state specifically that we would be following the district's line for the work that directly connects the intervention service and surveys that just will supply and obtain all required parent guardian notifications and consent. So we did add that and that's legal, um, did provide us with that language. But again, this is really about, um, professional development directly related to staff, it's the training, uh, module. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Director Rivera Smith. Other directors? Okay, seeing none. Item number three, approval of courses with new content as defined by Superintendent Procedure Number 2026. This came through CNI on December 10th for approval. Chief Becker?
Thank you, President DeWoo for that introduction. This is, um, a bar that comes before the board every year at this time. And it is a bar where we are adding or suggesting to you that we add courses to the high school course catalog. The process for how this happens is if a teacher, um, has a desire to teach a new course that isn't currently being offered in the high school catalog, they can put in a request. That request then goes to the appropriate program manager. So if it was a science course, it would go to Mary Margaret Welch. If it's a language arts course, it goes to Kathleen Vasquez, et cetera. Once that is then reviewed by the program manager and if it is determined to be an appropriate class, we have them submit their descriptions and you've seen some of those in your packet tonight. And then if it is approved by you as a board, then it goes into the offerings of a course catalog. High school principals and counselors then look through that catalog and say, do we want to offer these courses? What do we want to offer at our specific high school? And then if students enroll, then that class is taught. So that just kind of gives you an idea of the process that it goes through. What we're bringing for, to you tonight are eight new classes, as you've seen there. Eight is about the amount that you get each year. Um, it just, it varies depending on who wants to offer what, but you have eight tonight. And those eight, um, consist of a career and tech ed class in virtual reality. It consists of a pre-apprenticeship class, um, and that connects with our community workforce. There are, there's a class with Asian-American literature and another class Latin-American literature. And then four courses in visual and performing arts. So a few other things about this, when we took this to the December Curriculum and Instruction Committee, we were asked to add in the equity analysis that we asked the teachers to do or the program manager that brought that forth. And three of you were at that meeting and you remember that. So that is a little bit of a different thing than what you saw at CNI. We put that into, um, the bar that you have in front of you tonight. A couple other things I think is important to remember is that, um, we had a question that came about just today as to how this may or may not relate to ethnic studies. So I think I want to address that, at least with those two courses, the Latin American and the Asian-American lit classes. Keep in mind that in Seattle Public Schools, we don't have a credit for ethnic studies. So the courses.
Yet.
Yet, thank you. Thank you Director Harris. So the courses that you have in front of you, they are, um, the two courses in question are courses that under our current system would qualify for language arts credits. We are in the process with ethnic studies in trying to do some cross-crediting work, so one. So once a course is in the course catalog, um, for example, we have an African-American literature class already in our course catalog. We have a Native American literature class already in our course catalog. Once they're in the course catalog, then we can do a cross-crediting where it will allow us to give credit for a course that has an ethnic studies genre, or you've heard us talk about the ethnic studies framework. And then we could give credit in different areas. So there is a distinction, but there is also is a little bit of a connection here, but I wanted to clear up that, any confusion that may be with that.
So I'll open it up for questions and comments, Director Hersi.
Yeah. So in respect to that question about how this intersects with ethnic studies, um, I just want to be super clear with this. It seems as though the program manager for ethnic studies is not cool with this. Can you explain to me why that is? Because I want to make sure, I mean, it's, you could laugh, but also we need to respect the work of Tracy Castro-Gill and all the teachers who have put effort, excuse me, into this. And it's concerning to me that those individuals are not cool with this. So I want to know why.
Um, I, I can only speak on behalf of the process that we use here. I have not spoken to Tracy about her concern with this. I was made aware of that tonight during the board meeting. So I, I, I can only speak on behalf of the process. Um, the, the process that we currently have is a teacher can request a course that aligns with anything that we give credit in currently. And that is what has been done. There, there is no, nothing in these course descriptions that say that this is all about ethnic studies. Ethnic Studies Advisory Group has not reviewed these courses. And quite honestly, the only people who approve a new course coming through are the seven board members.
Sure. And my, I think where I'm coming from is that with how potentially contentious this ethnic studies adoption has already been, we've already gotten feedback from our community meetings. There's a lot of misinformation about what is and isn't. We need to be completely clear in our own house before we put anything forward. So I hope before we are asked to act on this, that there is a conversation with, uh, Tracy Castro-Gill about this so that we can be all on the same page. Because I want to make sure that moving forward, that we are not necessarily in lockstep, but at least walking in the same direction with this.
Thank you Directors. Chief Debacker, to be clear, the conversation tonight about item number three is specifically about these six courses.
Eight.
Excuse me, eight. The conversation we're thinking about with Director Hersi is in addition to, which is not captured here in this bar, but it is something I think, so just so I'm clear. This is just for the eight. This is not for the cross-crediting.
Correct.
You're just giving us kind of additional information to give context. Okay.
I was trying to connect some dots that have been made apparent just today.
Thank you. Director Harrison and Director Rankin.
Okay, I, I share Director Hersi's concerns and, and you and I have had some pretty thoughtful conversations about this as well. I guess my concern is that we haven't availed ourselves to members of the advisory committee. It, it, a system can't be just one person. And, and we have to be more robust than that. And I'm not sure I understand why we haven't availed ourselves to the advisory committee in this good work, especially while folks are out on leave. Because this is a high priority of this board. It's been a high priority of this board. And it's been high-centered several times. And, and I'm, I'm very frustrated and obviously I'm not very patient. I will own that. But why can't we do a better job of using the advisory committee and developing a better system? So that money doesn't disappear from last March to now, da-da-da-da-da-da. We've been having the same kind of conversations now for, for too long. And I'm, I'm, I'm concerned and I'm distressed by it. And I'm concerned and distressed when we have a publicly, um, Facebook that says content about and from ethnic groups can be taught through a colonized white supremacy lens, even in other languages. Assuming content about ethnic groups is by default, ethnic studies is hashtag re-whiting or whitewashing ethnic studies curriculum. I am a privileged white woman. I don't claim to understand a lot of this continuum. I'm working really hard at learning it. Because it matters to our fifty-three thousand students. But this, this is problematic to me. And I'm, I'm concerned and distressed.
Thank you Director Harris. Director Rankin?
As the newly appointed chair of the Curriculum and Instruction Policy Committee, I just, I want to make sure that I'm all the way up to, in the loop, up to speed, understanding what's happening. So can I, I'm just going to state my understanding of something. And if any members of the ethnic studies advisory team happen to be watching, please let me know if I have this or not. And then, um, Mr. Backer, please also the same. My, Dr. Debacker, my understanding is that there's confusion between an ethnic studies course and ethnic studies framework.
I just want to be really thoughtful. I'm certainly going to let you finish. That feels like it's going beyond the scope of the bar. So I'm going to let you finish, but about the eight courses we're thinking about approving, it is definitely outside of that scope. I, I do want you to finish.
In the context in which they are approved, I think. So my understanding is that the confusion is, well, and so, so I don't know. So that these courses, the cross-crediting is that, is that traditionally there would be a certain number of courses that count as eleventh grade English. And where the cross-crediting would allow someone to take one of these courses and have that count towards eleventh grade English instead of as an elective. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that opens us up to other options for, in this case, literature. But I think where we're getting stuck on is it's still, uh, the, the, the ethnic studies framework would then be laid on top of everything. And it's the lens through which reviewing everything. And I mean, in that context, having Asian American literature would do not be separate because it would be, everything would be incorporated. But I, I think that the confusion is around the cross-crediting and then what's an ethnic studies course? And then the ethnic studies framework and who is deciding that and how we're? That's, that's, that's where I am understanding the conflict.
Correct. Um, and, and there's some of, of everything that you said. We have an ethnic studies course in the current course catalog. And that is a, a, a course that gets an elective credit. Okay. So there is a course. Um, a little bit of history on the ethnic studies is that the task force, when it was formed a few years ago, came out with some recommendations. And one of their recommendations is that there not be, um, that, that we integrate, that we push in ethnic studies into courses. Thus the idea and the concept, how we're moving forward with the frameworks. So that you can take the themes of ethnic studies and you can lay that into any class, whether that be a kindergarten class or fourth grade class or a, another high school math class, as we saw, um, in some discussions earlier this spring. Um, so, so there's, yes, there can be a class. We have it. There can be frameworks that can be laid into or pushed into current curriculum. We have that happening now in Seattle Public Schools. And then we can also look at, do we ever want to ethnic studies graduation requirement? That may come before the board. Or we can look also, or and we can look also at, can we cross-credit some classes? And the cross-crediting is process is something we have not done yet. We are in the process of doing that. I met with the Ethnic Studies Advisory Group last month to discuss the process for doing it. And the discussion really is around, where does it start? So if we have a teacher, in this example, a teacher who wants to teach Latin American literature or Asian American literature. Um, where does, where do we start that cross-crediting process? Does that teacher hand that course into, um, where it would traditionally lay? And hand it into language arts program manager to say, what do you think? Do they hand it into the ethnic studies program manager, say, what do you think? Do we do it simultaneously? Does one group do it first and the other group do it next? We have not answered that question yet. We are discussing that right now with the Ethnic Studies Advisory Group leading that discussion. And the other program managers, if it was science, if it was math, if it was language arts, also having input. There is a meeting tomorrow of the Ethnic Studies Advisory Group. I would hope that this is a discussion on their agenda. Because we need to get this done soon in order to be in the course catalog, bringing us back to the bar, President DeWolff. Of, that we have to, we would like to know what we put in our port, course catalogs that our principals can look at to decide what they offer to their students so that when students go to pre-enroll in a few months. They will know if I'm taking a class, what it counts for. It is really, it gets down to that. We have not done the cross-crediting process yet. It is brand new for us. We're this close to getting it done.
Thank you.
So the course catalog is happening and I spoke a little bit about the work that had gone into removing some of the prerequisites earlier. We, and Dr. Debacker has been working with the Ethnic Studies Advisory Council and has been to a couple of their meetings. And it will be going tomorrow as well, one meeting and it's going again tomorrow. And I'm hoping as well that this is an agenda item that they are having conversations about because if we're going to take an Asian American literature course and make it a cross-credit with ethnic studies. That approval has to happen this month. Otherwise it doesn't happen for next year's students. So we've had some staffing, um, leave, some, we, we have some staff that are currently on medical leave. And when they're on medical leave, we can't talk to them because they're on medical leave. And so that also throws some challenges, I guess, and conversations that need to happen. However, there is an advisory council that I hope teachers on there will really take this seriously because the only people that will lose out if this does not happen are students. And so that's my message to the Ethnic, Ethnic Studies Advisory Council. Please come together, look at these courses, decide whether they can be approved for ethnic studies for cross-credit. Because we really want our students to be able to have access to that next year.
Wait, sorry, that actually just made me get more confused because I think that the cross-crediting is not to make it an ethnic studies course, but the cross-crediting is to make, non-white European focused course count as eleventh grade English, the other way around. Right?
But they would be and ethnic studies.
I mean, you, it's cross-crediting. So you're getting credit for your English lang, your language arts. And you're getting an ethnic studies credit. When you're cross-crediting, you're getting it for both.
But I think that's where the problem is, is that ethnic studies, the task force, the advisory group is saying that that's the, that's, that's in everything, ethnic studies is part of everything. And that making it an ethnic studies course is.
I, I think I need to ask some, or ask some clarification.
Yes, Chief Debacker, I know y'all have CNI next week. I want to be thoughtful that that might be an opportunity to really dive into this so we can bring it back for action, uh, on the twenty-second. Um, just to be mindful of time. So I'm going to.
Let's just add in one more thing. I will go to the Ethnic Studies Group tomorrow to see what is up.
Thanks Superintendent Juno. All right. Item number four, purchase of student and staff technology for new BECS four schools. This came through Ops Committee on December fifth for approval and welcome Chief Bergy.
I'll be brief if I might. This is the authority to purchase computers and technology. This bar covers the three schools that will be opening next year, Webster, Begley and Wing Luke, as well as our normal capacity that we asked for. The bar covers standard technology packages to outfit new schools and classrooms, including teacher-student and classroom technology. It also includes IT infrastructure such as switches and wireless access points. There were no changes requested in Ops.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. I'm back at it. Boomerang. Nope, bad penny. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. Seeing none, we move to number five, BTA four, approval of capacity management actions for the twenty twenty, twenty-one school year. This came before Ops December fifth for approval. I see. Chief of Operations Fred Podesta, take it away, kind sir.
Uh, the information in this bar is required by, um, Policy H thirteen and Annual Capacity Management Report. Um, it also authorizes us to begin planning, um, uh, capacity changes as needed across the district. There, um, you know, across the district, we have adequate capacity, but of course, at, at a site specifics level, there's always needs here and there. So this authorizes, uh, the addition of nine classrooms across elementary and middle schools. And a contingency of, that would allow us to add another six classrooms. Um, uh, on an annual basis, um, things change a lot from the time this report is brought to the board and the contracts are finally led. This is not awarding those contracts. We would be back when we actually decided this is what we're going to do and we need to place portables. But this kind of authorizes the overall plan at a pretty high level.
Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues. We're working on number five now, President DeWolff.
Thanks, President, Director Harris.
I was just going to say that actually this is, um, just checking in on this overall plan a little bit further is on the agenda for Ops tomorrow, um, with more recent information that may be coming through. Um, and, but, but we did move it forward for approval as it was because it is a high-level plan, knowing that things can change depending on what the needs in the buildings are.
Any other comments, concerns?
Remember, it was, um, approve, move for approval as amended. So where were the amendments in this one? It, when, when it was moved out of Ops, there was.
Was there? I actually don't recall.
Yeah, well, that's what we had spoken and that's why I, my notes don't actually say what the amendments were, but.
I could pull up my notes, but I believe it was, um, with relation to the fact that was brought up that Robert Eagle staff, regardless of whether or not the amendment on HC goes through, is, uh, going to need to move the elementary classrooms that were built for, um, Lipton Springs back into middle school spaces in order to utilize it. So there's a transition back for those spaces and I think that's not spelled out here. And so I think that's part, I think that was, there was supposed to be an amendment to put Robert Eagle staff in here maybe?
You know, I, I think again, since that's not a capacity issue at Robert Eagle staff, it wasn't addressed in that fashion. I mean, we, we may need to make changes because of the school, but, um, that, that, at that point wasn't, it hadn't been approved. It wasn't, um, yet a capacity issue.
Would it be okay to touch base on this tomorrow and kind of get the staff perspective?
Between now and then.
We would be able to come back and staff can make those changes appropriately based on that conversation tomorrow.
And shouldn't, shouldn't our agenda say approved as amended? I mean, isn't that the standard, Chief Counsel?
It is, but they didn't actually put any, they didn't change anything in it. This is exactly as it came to committee. So. Oh, there is.
Should there, should it have been on today's agenda showing, um, with amendments or with like updates since committee? I don't know if that's usually on the regular.
It's not usually on. Are there any additional comments, questions or concerns about this bar? Did you do number five? That's what I thought. Thank you. All right. Introdu, introduction item number six, BECS four and BTA four, approval of construction change order number twenty-four for the Lincoln High School Modernization and Addition Project. This came through Ops on December fifth for approval.
This represents what we expect to be the last cha, uh, set of change. This represents what we expect to be the last change, set of change orders for the Lincoln High School project. It's myriad of things that are attached to the bar, was reviewed with Director Gary, as are all our change orders. And I think we're, we're about done.
All right, questions or concerns from, from Directors? Okay, we'll move to our final introduction item, number seven, BTA4, Final Acceptance of Contract K5105 with AccuSet Construction, Inc. For the relocate and set up portable classrooms at multiple school sites project. This came through Ops on December 5th for approval. Take it away, Chief Podesta.
So this closed out a contract. This is the, the backend of the process of the capacity management bar that we did award multiple contracts to move portables that were accomplished in 2019. This was one of them. It called for the relocation of 10, or placement of portables at 10 different locations. The work has been complete. It was, the buildings are in service, and this just closes the contract out.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or concerns from Directors? All right. Thank you, do I have a second? All right. Being no further business for the Board, the regular board meeting is now adjourned at 8:41 PM.